The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, future board meetings, November twenty-sixth, the second is canceled. Something about being Thanksgiving week and people want to look out. The next one after that is December thirteenth, that will be here at six P M. And then after that is January tenth, twenty twenty-three at six o'clock. That will be a regular meeting, a board of finance meeting and organizational meeting. And those will all start right at six. Revision of agendas, there's just a couple other. The recommend, the, yeah. Donations, that's the word I was looking for. So we'll get right into that public recognition. Recommendation to approve a seven hundred and fifty dollar donation from two hundred and fifty of it from David Mann. Hoffman's Nursery and Landscaping, two hundred and fifty dollars and Gauntland Sun, two hundred and fifty dollars. And that is for the Northfield Girls Basketball. Also, recommendation to approve a two hundred dollar donation from Harbor Freight for Sharp Creek Elementary Robotics, organizational tools. A recommendation to approve a one hundred dollar donation from Northfield Class of nineteen seventy-one for Northfield Robotics. A recommendation to approve a one thousand forty-four dollar donation from Motion Industries for Southwood Junior Senior High School for robotics, for pneumatic kits. Recommendation to approve a three hundred dollar donation from Dan Wright for Southwood Junior Senior High School Robotics. Recommendation to approve a two hundred dollar donation from Barabas Barbecue for Northfield Wrestling. Recommendation to approve a six hundred and forty dollar donation from Denise Stoffer, forty dollars, Hoosier Chiropractic LLC, two hundred dollars, Katie Pratt, two hundred dollars, Vanderpool Law Firm, two hundred dollars for Northfield Wrestling. Recommendation to approve a two hundred dollar donation from an anonymous donor for Southwood Junior Senior High School Robotics. Recommendation to approve a seven hundred and thirty-six dollar donation from Ryan Harrington for Sharp Creek Elementary Robotics. Recommendation to approve a seven hundred and thirty-six dollar donation from Tiffany Hopper for Sharp Creek Elementary Robotics. A recommendation to approve a six hundred and forty-one dollar donation from Danielle Tolson, three hundred and forty-one dollars. Kay Chrome, Kay and Jeff Chrome, fifty dollars, McKellick Seagulls, two hundred and fifty dollars for Northfield Girls Basketball. And a recommendation to approve a two thousand four hundred dollar donation from Tiffany Hopper, two thousand dollars. Willahan Lawnmower Sales, two hundred dollars, Tri W, two hundred dollars for Northfield Wrestling. Very generous of us donors and we appreciate your donations.
It's a wonderful thing, Todd. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion in second to approve the donations that we've read, all in favor, say aye. School recognition, students and staff.
All right, sit back and relax. We have quite a few because we haven't been here for about a month. So I will begin starting with Northfield. Congratulations to Lady Norris Cross Country Team for advancing four girls to regionals that were held on Saturday, October fifteenth, at I W, sectional times places, for tenth overall, first for Lady Norris was Ella Gail with a time of, I'm sorry, it's Ella Gale. With the time of twenty-one, twelve, Myla Moore came in thirteenth, Trippie Beaver, thirty-fourth, and then Mara Zolman at thirty-eighth place. Northfield Football received exemplary behavior report from official Brandon Schreck for the first round sectional game at Southern Wells on ten twenty-one. He stated that we are honored to report no unsportsmanship fouls for either team at the sectional game. There was a mutual respect felt on the field as both teams played prideful football. It was apparent that the coaching staff for both teams take sportsmanship very seriously as they should for high school athletics. Thank you Southern Wells Raiders and Northfield Norsemen for exemplary sportsmanship. Also, congratulations to our Norris Football Team on another great season. Norris won their round one sectional game at Southern Wells on Friday, October twenty-first. They then went on to surprise a very good massive grant team in round two to earn a spot in the sectional championship game. Norris were defeated in the sectional championship by undefeated and very, 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 very good. They didn't say that many very goods, but Adam Central Team last Friday. We thank the players and coaches for their hard work, dedication and good sportsmanship throughout their, this football season. Northfield has enough girls to play girls wrestling team this year. This past Saturday, the ladies wrestler team traveled to New Palestine High School to compete in the Second Annual Dragons Women's Invitational, hosting forty-five teams totaling a hundred and seventy-five young women. The lady wrestlers finished seventh out of forty-five teams of the invitational. Good luck Lady Norris wrestlers on the rest of the season. Congratulations to our Northfield Football Players that have received all conference for their efforts on the field. Northfield All Conference Players were Eli Crow, Malachi Higgins, Jordan Kinsey and Mason Fisher. Honorable mission mentioned players, Jackson Pease and Joseph Delgado. Way to go Norris. Continue on, remember I told you to relax and just listen here, so. Northfield would like to congratulate our Walrus County Community Foundation Scholars of the Quarter for the first nine weeks, seventh grade Alec Copeland. And also eighth grade Peyton Turley. I won't read everything about that now, but congratulations to those two. Now we're on to Southwood. We'd like to recognize Emily Locker, Maile Mannahan and Luke Neal for making the twenty twenty-two Indiana All Regional Honor Band. They represent our band department on November twelfth and thirteenth at Mary High School, where they will be participating, performing with thirty-plus students from around our region. A concert on the thirteenth is four P M. and free to the public. Also, Southwood, Lindsay Silvers and Dakota Wilson both made the twenty twenty-two Indiana Hall District Honor Band. They will represent our band department on November nineteenth to twentieth at Plumwood High School, where they will be practicing, performing with thirty-plus students. Did I just read that? No, something else. From around the region. A concert on the twentieth is four P M. and free to the public. Also, congratulations to Southwood Knights for their performance football team on Friday, October fourteenth. Formerly unbeaten three A Tipping New Valley traveled to Southwood to take on Knights in a nail-biter of the football game. The Knights came away victorious and Tipping Valley is no longer an unbeaten team. Congratulations players for outstanding efforts. Priority and a tip of the coaching hat to Coach Steve Snyder for his shrewd use of timeouts to ice Tipping Valley's kicker. At the end of the game, way to go Knights, and that's what made them share the conference of twenty, the share of the championship T R C this year. While the entire Knight Football Squad played exceedingly well, one player from the group, Senior Jason Wopresik, was nominated for the Max Preps Athlete of the Week. Way to go, Jason. Congratulations to our Lady Volley Knights for their efforts during sectionals on Saturday. Of course, this is a few weeks ago. They began the morning competition with a three oh victory over Cass and then closed out the evening with their victory over Northfield to take the sectional title. The Lady Knights faced regional opponents at Clinton Central on Saturday. You already know what happened there. They actually won. And then we'll continue on with that. Once again, our Lady Knights prevailed in tournament play with victories over Faith Christian Academy in Daleville. Our Knights advanced to semi-state to take on Fort Wayne Blackhawk Christian. Play is set to begin at four P M. at Plumwood High School. Unfortunately, they did not win that, but they did one, they did win one set. And Blackhawk Christian ended up winning the state. And I think our own Mr. Drake was there to witness that. Anything we say about that?
Nope.
Anyway, so. Southwood, we'd like to congratulate our Knights, outstanding season for football. Then, of course, they ended up seven and three. And as a record, seven to one in conference play with a share of the three rivers conference. Additionally, the Knights defeated all other Walrus County teams and defeated, previously unbeaten, three A Tipping New Valley Football Team in arguably one of the most, one of the best football games this season. And this is a very good one, too. Lastly, I would like to share a little more information about the Friday game, and that's the one with Adam Central. During the third quarter, an Adam Central player intercepted the pass and was tackled on the sideline. On the run back, the player suffered an injury that required the ambulance to come onto the field, stopping the game temporarily. If you know, very, very bad leg break. One Adam Central parent reached out to the Southwood administration via email about the event. And that parent wrote, I wanted to commend your football team for integrity. They showed Friday night when their whole team came over to the Adam Central Football Team and led a prayer for our injured player. The maturity of those young men was impressive. We talked to a few of the players after the game that would appreciate if you could let the whole team know how much that meant to our boys and the fans. I hope your coaches and school officials realize what a group of great boys you have on that football team and the great leadership they exhibit. You should definitely be proud of them. And again, that was a very, very bad break and they just beat us pretty bad, too, in that game, so. Southwood would like to express appreciation for Mrs. Gilman's work to bring the Hoosier Shakespeare Festival to Southwood for a performance of a bet for Southwood and Northfield seniors. The play was an outstanding performance. Thank you, Mrs. Gilman, for all her hard work making this happen. And Sharp Creek Elementary wishes to recognize our Community Foundation Scholars of the quarter, the first quarter. Fourth grade Adora Martin and fifth grade Aiden Stanfield and sixth grade Emerson Zweigel. So congratulations to the student. And I'll say one more thing, and I imagine that Mr. Snyder and Mr. McDaniel may mention that, but we had our drama. They performed Friday and Saturday night. It was a combined MSD, Northfield, Southwood. Beauty and the Beast did a fabulous job. I know some of you were here on Friday. I was there Saturday night. Over six hundred people attended, which was excellent, too. Which we haven't had that for a lot of years, and so it was really neat to have those combined doing that, and they just did an excellent job. They actually had a lot of donations to be able to rent the set. The set was very professional. If you saw, had to see that, I put on Facebook and a lot of other things were on Facebook. And the outfits were great and the performances were fantastic, too. So it was neat to see them do that together and really thank Mrs. Miss Neat. Miss Neat does a lot at Southwood. Not only is she the band director, she's the choir director, she's a jazz band director, she's the drama director, pet band director and whatever else director there is out there. So she does a great job. And I've talked to her before about all that, but you know, she, she just loves what she's doing. She loves the kids. The kids do a lot of things on their own to, with the practice to make themselves better. There's just really need to see that, too. So that's all I have. But that's great to see all those different things going on. There's probably a lot of other things that we could put.
We will officially recognize the public comment period for agenda items only, although we have a public. So we will move on to consent agenda items. Need approval for the minutes of our last meeting on October ninth, eleven.
To approve those minutes.
Motion in second to approve the minutes from our last meeting on October eleventh, all in favor, say aye. Okay, moving on to financials claims.
I have one, just for information sake, and I think it's page six of the second set. I had desks or something.
Desks.
Desk.
Yeah. Desk.
Yes.
I saw.
Intelligent, something.
Yeah.
I just wondered.
So each, each of the buildings get, I give them a budget for capital projects to purchase desks to replace old existing desks for classroom settings, so that is.
There were two different.
You said page six.
Yes, you had two different groups, correct, Chris? I don't know why I think it's second.
On the back group.
But there, there was another straightforward desk. When I just got curious, what was trying to do this work?
So these look like these are for Northfield, because that's what the eleven is for. I would have to check that out to see for sure. Some of those desks, when they, when it says wave, I know that there are some desks that have like a wavy pattern that builds to connect with other desks.
I was curious what it was.
Yep.
There's a lot of new designs. There's all kinds of designs there. More modern look.
Collaborative to be able to join them together.
Right.
I'll need to approve claims.
So.
All of them.
Question in second to approve claims, all in favor, say aye. Payroll, what is seven and eight together?
So seven is a standard one. Eight shows the retro pays for the future contracts. So those would be payments made for the, I think it's four pays, August thirty-first, September fifteenth, September thirtieth, and October fifteenth pays. So those are the retro amounts added into that for the new contracts.
Which since those are all four payments together, then next payroll should be quite as.
It shouldn't, but hindsight, we also have coaches pays coming in. And so that's gonna skew that a little bit as well, so.
So, okay.
I'm going to approve payroll seven and eight.
So.
Motion in second to approve payroll, all in favor, say aye. End of month summary.
These are end of month balances. Looking good. Some of this increase is due to receiving, starting to receive transfer tuition monies in the education fund. We sent out statements to corporations of legal settlement back in, oh, it'd been mid to late September. We've collected about sixty percent of those at this point in time, which is a pretty good number for us. We'll continue to track those down throughout the school year. So we do have some of those payments that have been coming in that has helped in that education fund to recover those expenses that we already spent out. So fund balances continue to be steady and in a good position. Which then leads to cash flow. Only a couple of months left for this budget year. Cash flow represents what we have up until October. Everything is accounted for except for one thing, which I believe will be in our benefit, and that is the basic grant. Revenue that we would receive in November and December. That has not been factored in yet to what we would receive from our A D M changes in September. So as you recall, the A D M that we were receiving, the dollar amount was for two thousand and two students. And then that A D M for September, I don't remember the exact number, Mike. It was twenty-one hundred, right?
Yes.
Twenty-one something. So. That has not been reflected in this at this point in time. It should increase that, obviously. I will know for sure what those numbers are on our November fifteenth, Form fifty-four. Will tell us what those reconciliation amounts will be for November and December for now. Or for that change in A D M, I guess.
What happens on the last one, it's all about when you're collecting money from the other corporations and those. Do they have a timeline that they get a bye-bye or?
No. I mean, when I first started here, and Mike actually kind of started that, I mean, we went back.
Three years.
Three years.
Three years to get monies that we hadn't recovered yet.
Did you have any interest in that?
No. Not likely.
We also lost a lot because of three years earlier, still some years to go.
Years that you didn't.
That we didn't go back and try to get.
So since we put some procedures in place, we've never really had to go back any further than a year.
No.
To get those, and so I'd say the last at least three years, we've gotten all of our monies by by July or August of the next year. So there's no statutory deadline, but we just keep pressing on. And then eventually we get to a point where then we submit for hearings with the Department of Education. And then that's usually when people.
Just reminder that A D M count is twenty-one thirty-nine point four seven.
So we were receiving four seven monies for two thousand and two students, and now that reconciliation will reflect the number of the Sharp Creek group. So that's education fund, operation fund, nothing different. December, obviously, is when we receive our tax draw monies, which is our, you know, our main revenue times, June and December. Otherwise, we're always losing money in months because we don't have any revenue coming in like we do, because those are just coming in during those tax times, so. That's all I have.
Do you have any other questions for me? Move on to personnel. Under personnel, we have underemployment. A lot of these are going to be coaches that I'm about to read here, so. As Mike said, though, buckle up because it's a long run. Brittany Dawes, junior volunteer junior high cheer coach. Nick Hopper, third grade. Girls, third grade boys basketball, the G R threw me for a second. Casey Hudson, fourth grade boys basketball. Michelle Press, third grade boys basketball at Sharp Creek. Those are all Sharp Creek. Jeremy Ozzy, seventh grade boys basketball at Northfield. Evan Deaton, fifth grade boys basketball at Southwood Elementary School. Alex Miracle and Amber Hendrick, paraprofessionals at Southwood Elementary. Brian Bassett, sixth grade boys basketball at Southwood. Tabitha Floor, fourth grade boys basketball, Sharp Creek. Brittany Rebus, occupational therapy temp. W M A P. Ashley Manns, teacher on a temporary at Southwood Elementary School. Jolene Schumanauer, paraprofessional at Southwood Elementary. Katie Johnson, temporary teacher at Metro North Elementary. Carlos Delgado, fifth grade girls basketball, Sharp Creek Elementary. Rachel Epper, volunteer junior high cheer coach at Southwood High School. Jennifer Burcroft, volunteer junior high cheer coach at Southwood High School. Scott Deaton, fifth grade boys basketball, Southwood Elementary. Ryan Smith, fifth grade boys basketball at Southwood Elementary. And Ryan Pershing, sixth grade boys basketball, Southwood Junior Senior. Resignation, Caleb Arlow, junior high cheer coach at Northfield High School. And Amber Hendrick, paraprofessional at Southwood Elementary. Transfers, we have Haley Lanning transferring from kindergarten paraprofessional to preschool paraprofessional at Southwood Elementary. Tricia Ekman, transferring from paraprofessional to health service assistant at Southwood Elementary. Abby Cyders, transferring from paraprofessional to preschool teacher, temporary at Southwood Elementary. Rena Ruiz, transferring from custodian at Southwood High School to cook at Northfield High School. Allison Bartu, transferring from custodian at Southwood High School to custodian at Southwood Elementary.
Do you know the short of custodians at Southwood or?
They were hiring, but then the transfer happened, so we're still looking to fill that position at Southwood High.
And that is H R.
And our staff's doing a great job of bringing new babies in town. We have more A D M, because that's why we have a lot of temporary positions, a lot of maternity rates, so.
Motion to approve H R tonight.
Motion in second to approve H R, all in favor, say aye. Reports, Matt's not here, so we'll skip the Hartland Career Center unless you have something.
Yeah, let me just mention that. So one time we've been talking about in our, not our governing, because they're the board of managers, but we are just the advisory board, but I know meeting with Mr. Hobbs and the other superintendents, we've been talking about doing some different projects, and one thing that they're looking at is there's a roof that maybe another five years, within five years needs to be replaced, plus the HVAC system, plus the controls there. And so there's been a lot of discussion about how that would be paid for. And so we're looking at possibly doing the common school loan, which we've never done. The difference of a common school loan is that's from, you know, the Department of Education. Basically, what they do then is they take that money right from us before we even get it. It's almost like a payroll deduction, kind of like that, I guess, from our education fund that we, from our draw each month. And at one time, I was going to ask you to do a resolution today, but we're not ready for that yet because they're going to try to give us some different options. In other words, they'll get, try to get a firmer cost of what that will be, and then also get a firmer, some, some different ideas, whether that's going to be, you know, a two-year loan, a five-year loan, a ten-year loan. It can go all the way up to twenty-five years. I don't think we'll do that. The interest would be just crazy on that. But anyway, that's one thing that we're looking at. And they're still discussing at some point, maybe looking at adding on, but there's other ideas there, too. But for now, what we're really, really concentrated on is trying to get the funding for the roof there and also the controls and the HVAC system, so.
How have they done things in the past? Because our building's dated, it was not, I mean, how have they funded those?
A lot of things have been done internally by, by them there. And so it's really hasn't, Mark says in his time, even before his time, since he's been principal, there's only one other time they came to the schools, the five-member schools, and asked for money as far as that maintenance goes. And so there are different ways of doing that, of course. If you do a common, common school loan, it's based on enrollment of students that actually go to Hartland Career Center. If you go to do any kind of other maintenance, if you want to do it that way, it comes out of our capital projects. And of course, since our A D is higher, it would cost us more because of that. But right now, the emphasis is on looking at a common school loan. Because of other situations in, in the other schools, they feel like that would be best. And really, talking, you know, the doctor, to myself, there's, you know, we could do it different ways, but one thing we don't want to do probably is to spend a lot of extra on interest if we could actually afford some of it upfront. But we're going to get more information. Once we get more information, let's.
So the monthly monies that we send there, they don't have accounts to accrue or?
None of those are for capital projects. So what we do send at the beginning of the year, they send us a separate bill that is just for capital projects, and that is for the whole year. And so they use that in front of repairs, maintenance, or build up to anything that they have planned.
And they do have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in that fund to be able to use, but of course, the new roof's going to be a lot more than that and everything else. So they would apply that towards this project. So they're trying to get, like I said, more, they're getting firmer idea. Well, I think they have pretty firm estimates or quotes on that. But they're looking at how it really affects the interest rate and also how many years that they want to do that. Just want to make sure I share that, keep that going, because that, that's what, that conversation's going to continue, so.
Is the whole school needs a roof or is it fixed?
I, no, I think it's the whole roof, yeah. Yet, Mr. Bowman said there hasn't been hardly any major things done. And if it was, it was done, that's a lot, they've done it themselves, so.
Start building the trades for.
They wouldn't have to cost money where they could just work right through the school.
Have a year, just fix that up.
Yeah.
Build their own presses and.
There you go. All right. We'd have to wait till the rain, though, so.
Test it out.
All right, that's all I have over that, but I, but I have one other.
I was going to ask if you just wanted to run on.
I just want to share, you know, on October eleventh, we had a parent-teacher conference, and I always ask the principals. Well, the teachers start with it, of course, just to find out the actual attendance. And no shock that the lower grades have a lot more attendance than the upper grades. So just to give you a little idea, so Northfield's a seven through twelve building. Their total was nineteen point six percent. That's not really unheard of, that's typically. And one thing that's different about that now is, you know, there can be so many alerts with Skyward and different things like that. Parents can know every day if their kids don't have their homework done, they can know the grade up to date. And so it's not like the old days when you actually were just kind of waiting and, okay, I'm going to go get my report card, and then they know what the report is, and, because now they can know all the time. Continue on, Southwood was twenty-four point three percent. Theirs was increased a little bit because remembers sixth grade's there. Of course, sixth grade had a little bit more. They had like a thirty percent, so that kind of raised there compared to Northfield. So I'm sure if Northfield had sixth grade in their building, it would have been higher. We don't really compete with that, but just want to make sure it's.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we do. I should have said that. All right. Metro North, of course, now you know that it's pre K and pre K through second grade, so the younger ones, so they were ninety-seven point eight percent. And then Southwood Elementary, though, goes up to fifth grade, so you'd think it goes down a little bit, which it does a little bit, it was ninety-six point six percent. So just a little bit lower. And then, of course, Sharp Creek, you know, is three through six, so you'd think it would go down a little bit. Not surprising. It did a little bit, ninety. Not surprising, it did a little bit, 91.4%. So overall, 59.9% for the district. Just for fun, we don't have a lot on the agenda today, let me just say.
Do they have expensive door prices?
There's ways to get them.
Nice.
So littles, littles, I'm just going to go across now, so just grade levels. So 98.4 for littles, kindergarten was 99.2, 1st grade 97.7, 2nd grade 96.7, 3rd grade 97.9, 4th grade 91.7, 5th grade 94.7, 6th grade 53.4, there we go. 7th grade 22.7, then 24.7, then 24.6, then 13.1, and 21.7. And 12th grade was an even 20%, so, which is kind of interesting, higher than that sophomore class. Just interesting data that we like to collect and keep.
Yeah, those lower grade levels, that's tremendous.
Oh, yeah.
Parent engagement.
I've kept, I have this on a spreadsheet with all the years, and that's pretty typical, so, I mean, and really, you do want, you do really want the parents to be there. And if they're not there, call them or do something, and it's very, very important, because it's their foundation, right? So they need to be going and making sure they know what needs to be done. So thanks for sharing, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, this has been great. Perfilling an instructional report.
Yeah, I just like to keep you guys updated where we are with some of our testing. MSD sets aside money to pay for seniors to take the SAT that want to. And so we had several kids at North and South take that. We use grant funds for our, some of our 8th grade and 9th grade kids to take the PSAT. And so that testing is underway. And Mike kind of, let's keep, I kind of stole my thunder here. I think the play was amazing, it was one of the best I've seen since I've been here at the district. But it really kind of highlights all of the different ways that we collaborate so tightly between the high schools. And so I just made a rough list of them. You have the drama play, you have the shooting, you have our esports programs and industrial arts with Gary Dale and computer science, we're going to do that next year. And so, you know, to pull that off for the staff, they're split between buildings, like they got to have personalities, like to sell themselves and get kids involved. And then the kids, many of them can't drive, and so they have to convince parents and that stuff. And so we just have, I just think that speaks highly of the staff involved and the students to be able to pull off such a great, I mean, they were putting three or four hours in the meantime, that's what it takes to put on a parade. I mean, these guys are putting in the time. And again, you're talking about kids that come straight from Norfield, and Lindsey D has to attract kids from both sides. And so I just think it's always good to keep that in mind, how often we do that. I think sometimes we might forget it, but like I said, I'll go through those one more time. So our drama department, esports, shooting, industrial arts, computer science. They all work across the whole county, really, to get kids involved, and so.
Just good to know. And the main two parts, one was.
The more failure one from Southwood.
The leads, we're spooling perfectly.
Yeah, that's nice.
Under new business, we have a recommendation to approve an overnight field trip for Southwood High School art band and choir to Chicago. And we're just going to do both of these. There's also a recommendation to approve an overnight field trip for Norfield 8th grade to Washington DC. The Chicago trip for the Southwood students is June 12th to the 14th of 2023, and 8th graders from Norfield going to Washington DC. That's March 23rd through the 26th of 2023. Entertainer motion to approve those.
Can I move to through those? Field trips?
Motion and second to approve the field trips for Southwood and Norfield, all in favor, say aye. Okay, we have no board policy, we have no unfinished business or board policy. And again, no public to publicly comment. Any items from board members?
I have one thing. Now, although there's nobody here from the public, I will address the people who may be watching on Facebook Live or will come back and watch it. At the beginning of this meeting, at 6 o'clock, the polls in Wabash County mercifully closed on the ugliest campaign season in my recent memory. And although I don't, you may, some of you may know that outcome already, but I don't. But one thing I do know is that tomorrow is Wednesday, November 9th, and we're going to get up, and we're going to go to work and go to this grocery store with people that we didn't necessarily agree with. We're going to go to church with them Sunday, we may go out and eat restaurants or the theater this weekend. And I would just urge everyone to get back to the kind, selfless people that we have come to expect out of each other in this community and put all of that divisiveness and anger behind us. And I would urge that we do that quickly. I'm saying that without even knowing the outcome of the election today, but I think we all need to take a step back, take a deep breath, and rise above and accept whatever outcomes face us this evening, because we've had enough divisiveness in this community. And I, for one, am proud to be part of the Wabash community and want to be able to continue to get along with people I know in this community. That's all I have to say about it. Anybody else? All right.